...and Tuesday, December 17th. It's envisioned that the City Council will revert back to the first and third Wednesday of each month, starting with the New Year. So with that, Mayor, that concludes the first item. The second item will be presented by Joe Cunha, bid results for competitive resource center. Mr. Cunha?
Thank you for -- that's actually the community affairs facility, 913 Soul Avenue, formerly Hispanic Affairs. We took bids on October 30th and included a base bid for the windows, which the alternate bids I followed were ranked by myself after reviewing the damage to the building and the overall needs. So essentially, we're trying to seal the building in every way possible before we actually went to the more expensive item of actually cleaning and finishing the facade, which is a little more on the cosmetic side. So we made the windows the prime portion of the contract. Our lowest bid came in at $10,313, and the way I wrote the spec was to award the alternates in priority order until the $20,000 maximum budgeted was reached. So what I determined was the two combinations -- the one combination that made the most sense was to take the base bid for the replacement of the 14 windows and the repair of the softening page, which currently has big gouges and holes and openings, panels to get in, rank to get in. Once those two items are completed in this contract, which I'm at, we have a whole work contract tonight on that, then we can potentially, based on the CDPG ranking system or however we figure that out, go for another phase if the chairman and so chooses or the board so chooses. So tonight, I'd like to recommend our CFL's Ricky Guards has certified that funds are available to a maximum of $20,000. We're asking for a work contract in the amount of $17,830 for that work.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Cunha?
You may want to make a correction on the second page, 4B.
Mayor's added the resolution on?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yes, okay. Yes, dealing with the certified copy to Mr. Nucio as acting city manager.
Yes, also, the CFL has requested that I take out the clause for condition upon certification of funds. Since he has certified funds, that will also come out in the final copy of this resolution.
So, is there consensus among council to move this resolution forward for action during the regular portion of tonight's council meeting?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda, previously when the agenda had been set, we had listed the five-year tax exemption ordinance, which is expiring at the end of the year 2013. We have taken that ordinance off for discussion this evening because our redevelopment council is going to be providing a memo to the mayor and council, providing his recommendations with regard to whether the council should consider re-adapting that ordinance to be effective as of January 1, 2014. And in its place, we've asked Eric Aguilar, Tax Assessor, to come this evening to provide an update to the mayor and council and the public with regard to the revaluation. So, Mr. Aguilar, could you come over?
Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the 2014 revaluation. The inspection process and evaluation process is now complete. The taxpayer hearings or the taxpayer notifications of assessed values have been mailed out, which in turn bombarded -- who bombarded my phone the past couple days with questions and concerns. What they see on their notice is reflecting 100% market value. It's not an apples-to-apples comparison of the 35.78% assessed value for the 2013 assessments. So assessments that have roughly tripled are effectively the same. As a result of the revaluation, the ratable base went from $415 million to $1.2 billion. So the city basically tripled its ratable base. In turn, the tax rate will be significantly less, will be about a third of the current The taxpayer informal hearings are going to begin tomorrow in council chambers. They have to be scheduled ahead of time with the revaluation company. The number to call is on each notice. At the -- the purpose of the hearing is for the taxpayer of the property owner to review the property record card, to be sure, to check and balance, to be sure that it is accurate what the characteristics of the property are on the property record card are accurate for what is actually on the property. Realty appraisal will also have a list of recent sales in the city for taxpayers to review. They'll have that here in council chambers, and property owners could review the actual sale prices of properties within the city. Shortly after the hearings, notices are going to be mailed to anyone who had a hearing stating if there is a change in the assessed value or if there is no change. Anyone who wants to dispute the value placed on the property can file an appeal with the county tax board. These appeals are, can be filed online. The website, the link to the website can be found on the city's website if you click on Tax Assessor. There's a link that will bring you directly to the appeal site, or it can be found on the Monmouth County Public Record System website. Anyone filing an appeal will be expected to provide evidence of market sales proving why the assessment should be reduced.
So the hearing that takes place is just figuring out kind of how they came up with the market value.
Exactly.
Is there some sort of determination that's going to happen at that?
No, there won't be a determination at the hearing. The representative for Realty Appraisal, they may send out an inspector. For example, if you see the property record card and it says that you have a finished basement, and you know that you don't have a finished basement, you'd recommend, you tell them to go out and inspect your property, to re-inspect it, and they in turn would come back, they would update the card based on that new inspection that will occur the day of the hearing, and you will be mailed a new assessed value.
And then from that, if there are discrepancies that you find with the card and, for example, unfinished, you have an unfinished basement, is that taking care of that here or that's what you will?
You won't know the, yeah, you won't know the number until after, until you get the notice, the second notice sent to you, saying that there's a change in the assessment.
And then, so at what point do you then take that to the county tax board?
December 1st. The county tax board appeal system, it will be open for appeals. It may be open before that, but definitely by December 1st, it'll be open, and you'll be able to file an appeal anytime prior to January 15th.
I would just request one thing. I think there are probably many people that are getting the reassessed values and they have gone up astronomically in their view.
Right.
And so it's difficult for, you know, many people to determine, how does that really mind to affect me? That may be one of the reasons why you're getting so many phone calls. It would be nice if you could put out some type of chart, not an actual chart, but in some instances, in one instance where the taxes will go up, one where it will probably remain the same, and maybe one where it is lower. This is approximate to better explain to the public what is actually happening.
Right, it's difficult to do that without a 2014 tax rate that's actually certified. We can estimate the tax rate based off of the 2013 budget and all of our new ratable base of roughly $1.2 billion, which would come to somewhere a little north of 2%. There's two moving parts to that. One of them won't be, the actual ratable base won't be settled after the appeal season, and the budgetary process won't be settled until after 2014, the second quarter of 2014. So to put out an estimated rate is somewhat, you know, somewhat dangerous because, you know, you're estimating all two estimated figures. If you want to compare apples to apples, your 2013 assessment, if you divide that by the equalization ratio of 2013, which is 35.78%, if you take your old assessed value, divide that by .3578, that figure would be an apples-to-apples comparison with the figure that's on your notice.
Hopefully, everyone got those numbers.
You can call me.
There will be a call.
Essentially, the current assessment is reflective of only about 35.78% of true market value.
Right.
Correct. So the purpose of the revaluation is to change the assessments and bring them up to full 100% fair market value. But the assessments and the rate have an inverse relationship. When the assessments go up for a revaluation, the rate will drop. So in the end, someone may not be paying much more, if anything, more in actual tax dollars. But we can't forecast that exactly as the tax rate hasn't dropped. But that's typically what happens.
The letter, including myself, I scheduled my appointment for Friday. Tomorrow's the last day of scheduled appointments for me. Stretch that, if somebody was on vacation for a week, they wouldn't get the things.
Right.
Would it be fashionable of that?
I'm not sure. I think some of the letters actually got mailed. Yours may say Thursday. I don't think the letters got mailed on the same day. So I think other people's letters say different dates.
Okay, because mine says I can call Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Right.
But other people had longer?
Yeah, because theirs probably wasn't mailed out until later.
Well, how about if somebody was on vacation for a week? If somebody has a problem?
If somebody has a problem, call me. First, call the number. If it is past due, I'll make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
As long as it's before the hearings are over, which is on the 16th.
What are the hearings taking?
It begins tomorrow and goes until Saturday, the 16th. Every day except for Sunday, 9 to 5, other than Tuesday, the 12th, I think it is.
So the hearings Saturdays?
4 o'clock, they're here during the workouts. Yep, they'll be here Saturday, they'll be here on Monday, which is a holiday, they'll be here.
And they're going to have all of the information with them?
Yes.
And it's basically an informal-type meeting, isn't it? It's not an actual hearing where people have to be nervous that they're going to be appearing before a tribunal. They just meet with representatives of the revaluation company and have a dialogue as to why you think the number that they may have put in the letter that was received is in excess of what the current fair market value, at least in your mind, of your property is.
Right, or even if you're just interested in the actual characteristics of your property, the square footage or bathroom, the number of fixtures in the bathroom, you want to be sure that, and the basement, the unfinished, unfinished attic, you want to be sure that it's accurate, whether you agree with the number or not.
And after they have this meeting, they may then determine to adjust the figure. And when they finally do send out a final notice, that figure may be lower based on whatever information you're able to bring forward to the revaluation company as part of that informal meeting. There's no guarantee of that, though. Could stay the same.
So Eric, you said our ratable base went from what figure?
Went from 415-ish, 416 bit lot million to $1.2 billion. That $1.2, yeah, that $1.2 billion, depending on the appeal season, if there's a lot of appeals, that will be reduced. But right now, it stands at $1.2.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our work session agenda concerns police and fire special duty assignments. Mayor and council, I had asked that this be put on the agenda because I have received a phone call from the city's auditor, Dave Kaplan, with regard to the procedures for funding these types of assignments. These are situations where members of our police and fire departments are hired by outside contractors such as JCP&L or other private parties to direct traffic or provide other similar services. And we have provisions currently in our code in Section 2-852 that deals with all of the procedures and protocols associated with those special duty assignments. Mr. Kaplan had contacted me because he thought that the procedure was that the private contractor had to deposit the funds upfront prior to the services being rendered. And when we reviewed the current ordinances, it appears that our current procedures do not in fact require payment in advance, but rather require the contractor to make payment within 15 days from the date of billing. And then there are certain penalties that may be assessed against the linked parties. But Mr. Kaplan provided me with a copy of a government finance notice from the DCA, wherein they have prescribed certain best practices associated with these types of police and fire special duty assignments. And it appears that our current ordinance is a little out of step with the best practices recommended from the DCA. And in bringing this forward to you, it was my request and suggestion that you would authorize me to update our ordinance to bring in line with the best practices from the DCA, and that I could bring you a revised version for your consideration for introduction at the next council meeting. And that would, of course, include payment upfront by all contractors. The next item is continued review of the proposed ordinance relating to alcoholic beverage control. As you know, we've talked about this, I believe, in the last two council meetings, the potential for the mayor and council to amend the current ordinance dealing with licensed premises within the city, so that alcoholic beverages could not be sold from retail distribution licensed premises, which are commonly referred to as liquor stores, in their original containers, commonly referred to as packaged goods, prior to 9:00 a.m. on any day of the week. Right now, our ordinance would allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages by those types of licensees commencing at 7:00 a.m. And based upon concerns that have been raised by the council in prior meetings, you had authorized me to draft a proposed amendment to the ordinance, which I've given to you on your packets, and I wanted to bring that forward for your review. I stamped it "draft," and if you are satisfied with it, what I could do in accordance with your discussion from the last meeting is send that out to all of the licensees that would be affected by this, to give them an advance heads-up. The mayor and council are considering this, and then you would potentially consider introducing the ordinance either in its as-is format or revised at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to give a heads-up. Yeah, of course.
Very good. So I'll take care of now sending this out to all of the licensed premises that will be affected, and we'll go from there. I'll list it for the next council meeting for potential action on first reading of the ordinance. The next item tonight is special events applications. One item, Mr. Gilmore?
This is an application from the Sons of Ireland. This is their annual Buller Vale plunge, which I believe this is the sixth year they've done it. It's a great event, brings a couple thousand people into Asbury Park on New Year's Day morning. Good event. Any questions?
Do you have fees?
I don't have the fees right now, but I know that they prepaid us $5,000 already.
What, I'm sorry?
They prepaid us $5,000 already.
On the must-mute?
Yep, well, there's always, there's police, there's the NTs on that. I'm sorry that we didn't calculate them. We actually are just locking the dating route now. John, we'll talk about this application at tomorrow's meeting. Any questions?
I think it's great.
Yep. Anybody want to sign up to the one?
I thought about it under advice. I was told maybe I should.
We may need a doctor's.
Exactly.
Thank you.
On what?
Matters to be addressed by the city council?
John?
A long memorial drive into the city parking lot. There's been 10 or 12 cars and trucks parked there for years. They're junked. Can't we just take them to the junkyard and get $400 piece for them and get them out of there? The windows are broken out, everything's locked down. Why are they being parked for?
I know a couple of them couldn't find the tiles.
Well, take them to the junkyard. They're all on tiles.
Sure, sure. There was definitely a lean issue with the ambulance. Well, that's actually the other lot. And there was a lean issue with the, I can't work on it now, but it was another vehicle. The animals you're going to grab, so we can take them with our equipment once it comes back from repair down to the scrapyard.
Did we make the corrections to the Monmouth County Park System grant for the third phase of funding that was due October 30th, ago, I guess, in the county?
Yes, we did. And when I first received another letter looking for a special kind of map that I went to them today.
Thank you.
And they wanted a hard copy of the miss, which is going out.
Okay, then the thread, I just need to redo. I think I have the answer, but I just want to, there are a bunch of public. The RFPs are accused of the money goes to the court system, which is over $50,000. They're out, and should be received this week or next week?
Next week.
And if you start to like the money?
That has to be approved. Any contractor, though, has to be approved by, I believe it's the AOC, the Administrative Office of the Court. So we're not able to, once we get the proposals from any interested vendors, to proceed and award until we get the okay from the state. And try to get that as soon as possible, obviously, but there is that.
That's why I've been harping on this issue since July, so we start anticipating some money in 2013 to offset the tax rates in 2014. Hope we're not going to miss it, but it sounds like we are.
I don't know the timeframe associated with the AOC, but I certainly know the state is anxious for us to proceed with this. So with that in mind, we'll see if we can get them to act on this as soon as possible.
Okay, the second question again, if it goes into getting money to relieve the tax burden of selling a part of the firehouse. I know we got finally state approval as the appraisal started.
Yes, we let the Otto group know that we would like them to prepare their updated appraisal report with regard to that firehouse so that we can proceed with, at the mayor and council's discretion, to dispose of that property in accordance with the local lands and buildings law. There are a number of different options that are available to you, and we can explore those options once we get the appraisal back.
And it started as on fast track?
Yes, I let them know. And this vendor had a much shorter turnaround time than the other vendor who submitted a quote for these services.
That's why.
So, yeah, just a few things. First of all, I'd like to thank anyone that participated in the lake cleanup. We had over 200 people show up between Del Lake and Sunset Lake, which you notice the lakes are still low, so we're kind of praying for rain when we needed it. We don't have it. They'll fill right back in, and we were able to take out a lot, especially from Sunset Lake that they didn't even know was there. But just to let you know, because you got involved with the Sunset Lake, the Del Lake Commission is looking to undertake approaching the county to possibly dredge that lake so that we can get it cleaned up like it needs to be. We just need to get some funding. Also, I want to congratulate any of the winners of the school board election. Looking forward to continuing to work with the school board as we have in the past for the benefit of our children and the city. And that's it.
John?
A couple of things. We keep, every year we go over and over, the cars parked on the sidewalks. Code says it's the police, police says it's code. Can you tell me what it is?
I'll speak to other departments.
All right, I mean, when they're parked on the sidewalks, I hope people can walk around them, but they're not supposed to be parked there. Joe, with respect to some of our roads, I taught you a while back, Scott Steiner, you said there was money to do it, and then also some of the roads, 6, 7, 8, so badly potholed and, you know, over around North Beach.
Hacks.
Hacks.
Hacks, like you lose that muscle going on that.
I mean, if we're able to do, let's start doing something.
Yes, so I'll start with Hacks. Hacks specifically down one block where the metropolitan way. We approached the county about shared services a couple weeks ago. There's about 12,000 and change left over from a 2008 vote program. CFL has certified that we could use that funding to go towards it. The issue is, we don't have enough to cover everything. We have enough for materials or the shared service, or the shared service but not materials. So I'm trying to do this petition I saw, and we take care of Asbury Avenue to assist us with either materials or one portion of that, so we get that block done, even if temporary, just a two to three inch cap. City would do the work of ripping out existing base. They would come in and just pop it for us. As we all know, that is really their responsibility in the WRA, but it's not even passed. It's not even filed, so. As far as Steiner, I'm having a deal with you today, and I received maps last week from Transit. I need to locate exactly how far I can go with the curb. We were contemplating going in a curb before the winter, so we could at least start parking it before the rip of destruction, which is scheduled for sometime spring, summer next year. We did receive money.
So the purpose I brought up was to park them?
Exactly. It looks preliminarily that on the south block of Postball Place, which we called Steiner, just north of Postball, it is an hour, but we will look like we can get in the island parking on at least one side if we turn that road one way. We would lose parallel on the other side, but we'd gain a lot of apartment if you could permanently go apart to match the block by Georges there. Block by Georges, we could put back exactly the way it is. I don't know if we're going to be able to get permanent on both sides, but that is all going to be coming forward to you all. We're going to have to bond for that money ahead of time. The OT is a reimbursable type grant. Also, if we choose to go along on those, which I'm going to recommend, it's going to have to be done by ordinance install, so that's all going to be for the first quarter of next year.
Okay. One last thing. 11/11/11, Veterans Day is coming up, and we have a ceremony every year in our Veterans Park. Same time, same place. It'll be wonderful to see you all there.
I just have a couple of things. Joe, at the last meeting, we talked about the board book and the specs, and can you just do a thing on that?
Yes, I went to publishing for Tunity Morris Poster. Plan specs available Tuesday and next week. It may have printed Monday. I don't know that the direction came out on time today, but either way, they will be available first part of next week. Scheduled date is November 26th in the morning. We have a council meeting that night. Depending on the outcome of the bill, and if not, we get together and determine if it's feasible to recommend a ward that night. If not, I would say the latest we award, if we need more time to review, if there's any kind of issue with the bids, follow meeting, assuming we don't get a rebid eventually on it, let's cross our fingers on that. But that gives them ample time to put the bid together and submit and put the turnout. It'll be in the press as well as posted.
And what ballpark for actual shovel on the ground can they?
Ballpark would be middle of December, if that's written into the contract. Mandatory 10-day starts from the award contract, so depending on if we award 26th through the 3rd, we still would like to at least get the demo done before Christmas, so that we can start with the sand cleaning, other than the piles down, and insulation deep piles throughout January, substructure in February, the part of the decking, and the decking before the end of March. It's very strict as far as weather, the latest they have to be requested by the Indian League, which the weather event occurs. They have to prove that the weather event is outside of the normal scope or normal realm of the season. That's the way construction industry works. And I'm confident if they add damage clause in there, I think we'll be able to get this done ahead of time. Hopefully significantly ahead of time.
Great. This is really little, Tom. Just me, and really, it's, it's, I sent you an email. I don't know that summer CO is kind of over the weak side, so maybe we can start in the meeting, just reading about that again. And then just the report from the parking meeting last night. The parking meeting, essentially, we're looking, we're not going to put this on the radar of the council, is we've done it in previous years where we've done what I'm calling holiday parking. I'm not sure if I'm using the right terms, but something to draw people in to shop here during the holiday season. And what I think we've done previously is kind of at Thanksgiving to January 1, free parking, people come in, you know, there's a few that are. people come in, you know, there's a few variations of that, but that's something that we should put on the council's radar because it'll probably be on the agenda in November. The other thing came out of the parking meeting was a parking consultant who will provide us with a comprehensive parking plan in the torn space and so on. So this is really more of an FYI in terms of getting this on the council's radar. And, and, I'm going to say one thing. I'm going to thank Kiki, who, I don't know if we have a last council meeting, but when they did the weddings on the Boardwalk Activision Hall, Kiki, who is our Assistant City Clerk, came in multiple times, worked extremely long hours, and from the organizations that I've spoken to, was hands-down the first clerk who handed out marriage licenses and respected the board order. So I just wanted to public the paper. That was a really proud moment for me in the city.
Oftentimes, we talk about quality of life issues. In this past week, I saw three pairs of sneakers hanging from wires. And I would encourage, and actually, Joe had someone go out and cut them down. They ended up finding 19 pairs of sneakers hanging from wires. This sends a very poor image as to what the community's like. So I encourage each and every one of you that when you see something like this, please call DPW and give them the location so they can go out and cut them down. The other thing, Joe, there are trucks that are parked on Springwood Avenue. And prior to the infrastructure work, there were no trucks parked there. Could you tell me why they're parked there? And is there nowhere else that they can be parked?
Well, we have been expanding our horizons to look at some of the empty lots at the city homes. Unfortunately, a lot of them are up there on the west side. Right now, it's staging that lot because we're continuing to stage it that we had. We were at the point where we couldn't even move an yard over there. We liquidated last year a significant amount of equipment, as Council Moore just said, just from what we did. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, there's a lot less in the transportation lot, but all I was was a swath. We had a lot of purpose. So I think this is a perennial issue. It's been going on for not how long, but.
That's not true. That's not true.
It is not a good thing to park those trucks in a residential area. So I would encourage you to look far and close to see if there's somewhere else that they can be parked.
Okay.
Last of all, tonight, I'll be making an appointment to the planning board. And so those of you that stay around, you'll be able to find out who that is. Thank you.
I forgot something. When we had the recycling day at City Yard, it was very nice there. It was probably the first time in the city yard since I retired. And I got a little tour of why we don't have any space for the trucks inside, because we have all these big parker meters that have been there for five years. What do you, especially if we're getting rid of the junk truck, what are you doing with those things? Get rid of them.
We'll take them down to the scrapyard.
Well, yeah, if there's nothing else, then you can put that truck inside. And I went towards the back by the salt bin. There's two ATVs back there just rotting away because they're outside. And parker meters are made for the outside. They're useless, worthless, or inside. It just makes no sense to me whatsoever.
I actually wasn't worried of ATVs, but I'll take care of that.
Uh huh. Well, they're probably robbing the way right now.
Well, actually, we were broken down from the beach first.
They're not junk though. I mean, that's why you have no room in the yard. We got dirty junk standing there taking up space. And we have like two bays, three bays full parkers. The second generation of ones we lost in Sandy because we didn't take them out of the ground, are they junkable? Are they salvageable or what?
No, they're salvageable.
Wait. Okay.
I need a proposal for it to be left to.
Okay.
Invest in them and bring them back and lay out in each area.
Okay. But the first generation, the garbage?
The garbage. They're in the electrical bin. We don't park vehicles there anyway, but you can still be riding. Man, you need more space. They don't have the electric system.
Okay. And that is the one thing I forgot. I could ask you every other feed, so I got to ask again. The big orange barrel, Sunset Memorial, holds again the top of that, where it's aiming?
I just need to make sure we have the funding for that. So I've been checking the rickety yards on that as well as vehicles. And that's an issue. Those are two of the biggest things on my list.
Okay. That one, I'm sorry.
You know what, Joe? Just one other thing. Winter's coming. There's going to be snow, ice, et cetera. And there are many locations throughout the city where there are trees that are falling over electrical lines. And so should residents get in touch with the electric company?
Yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We probably can't clear the actual walkways in the street side where the streets super grows. The rest of the area, most of them are up in the wires. So absolutely, the electrical company's been very responsive to us, especially since May. And we would like to continue that relationship. I know they hacked a lot of the candy. We sure are disgusted with that. But I think what you're referring to now is the extension of all the candy that we did not pack. We left that video. Now that's overgrown. So absolutely, if they do that, if they don't want to do that, they can call us and we'll go on to that.
And just one final thing. I would like, I had requested previously a report by the Shade Tree Commission to just talk about the project of planting trees on the Wood Avenue. And so I'd just like to go on record that I would have someone from the Shade Tree Commission at the next meeting to come and give a five or 10-minute report. Five minutes would be good.
What's up, Joe?
I'll go ahead, John.
You guys are interrupting me. I apologize. I got to start running things up. Recently, we got a printout from the Finance Department. We had some line items overspent, some salary line items. And the only way I can see that that doesn't happen again, can the council get, I'm going to start off with that quarterly. I'm not asking for monthly, a quarterly report on line items to do with salaries so this doesn't happen again? Because we picked up the first quarter, second quarter, which people wouldn't be so far in debt in the third and fourth quarter. So I don't, I mean, we get it in the housing card each month. So I'm not asking for each month, but can we get a financial report on line items or salaries, and only operating expenses also? Just that way, we don't find out when it's too late. Uh oh, we're overspent already in the social waters.
I'll speak to your rickety cards about that.
Thank you. It took me six weeks to get that button.
Any other comments from the mayor and council? Next item, matters to be introduced by the city attorney. I'd like to let the public know that the council may be taking action this evening on two matters that were addressed during our executive session. The first would be a resolution authorizing settlement of the matter captioned John Crescio and Robert Armento versus the city of Asbury Park. This is a pending litigation case before the Superior Court of New Jersey that concerns police promotion issue. The city is being represented by the New Jersey Intergovernmental Insurance Fund. And general counsel to the NJHII appeared at our executive session and recommended a settlement. And this resolution, if approved this evening, would memorialize that. Secondly, the council may authorize the use of funding in the amount of $13,500 from the city's UEZ account for the purpose of conducting an audit of the UEZ for the years 2008 through 2013. And that action also provides for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the 2013 budget pursuant to what's known as chapter 159, and authorizing a like appropriation for an item that wasn't originally anticipated in our budget. And this, again, relates to the $13,500 expenditure out of funds from the APUEZ account for the purpose of conducting an audit. And that's it. Thank you.